Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We are here in Van Nuys City Hall as we are on the first Friday of the month. Each month, we welcome Los Angeles to the San Fernando Valley and vice versa, and we encourage folks to come down here to Van Nuys to be a part of these special council meetings here in Van Nuys City Hall. These meetings are open to the public, as all of our meetings are, each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month, here on that first Friday of the month, and then the rest of the time down at the City Hall in downtown. We are available for public comment here, general public comment, as well as comment on items that have been agendized for public comment, and we broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and we also are available through the city's homepage through live webcast at the city's homepage at www.lacity.org. We also are available through audio phone calls at council phone, which you can call in and listen to the proceedings of the city council or any of our committee meetings, and that's available at (213) 621-CITY. There is also a valley number, an 818 number, and a number down at the harbor as well. Here in the valley, that number is (818) 904-9450. On the west side, it's (310) 471-CITY. And in San Pedro, it's (310) 547-CITY, all local calls. We are waiting a full quorum, but I want to thank council members Cardenas, our host here, council member Gruehl, council member Weezer, council member Labange, council member Parks, council member Smith, council member Weiss for all being here, pursuing to council rules on time, and we will not be expecting councilwoman Hahn, council member Perry, or council member Reyes, they are all excused on city business, and Mr. Parks is, sorry, Mr. Padilla is excused to arrive late at 11:00 a.m. So with that, I'd like to recognize, for presentations as we do each Friday, council member of the sixth district to begin, council member Tony Cardenas.
Good morning, Los Angeles, thank you very much, Council President Garcetti, for this opportunity to present to you an organization that is going to assist us with our human trafficking efforts here in Los Angeles. For those of you who do not recognize what human trafficking means, human trafficking is the enslavement of human beings. It is happening around the world, and Los Angeles is no exception. As a matter of fact, Los Angeles, with our many points of entry, is a hotspot for human trafficking, and what we're doing in Los Angeles is making sure that we do what we can to expose the face of human trafficking here in our community of Los Angeles, in the city and in the county. Three years ago, I created the task force on human trafficking and child prostitution, and made a commitment to train over 40,000 city employees to recognize human trafficking and then create a network of reporting of that activity. I did this because I realized that police officers are not the only individuals who should and could help out in this modern-day slavery fight. We also realized that there was a huge lack of awareness among the community, and therefore, with federal grants and the police department and many not-for-profit and organizations around the city, we are training individuals in and outside of the city of Los Angeles to be the eyes and ears to be able to report this activity at every opportunity. In addition to that, we're fighting against concealed enslavement, and that's exactly what FACE is, F-A-C-E, Fight Against Concealed Enslavement. This organization has joined our task force, the Commission on the Status of Women and CAST, in raising awareness in the city of Los Angeles. The Fight Against Concealment and Enslavement and its FACE Virtual Neighborhood Watch will offer the American people a direct way to assist local, state, and federal authorities in stopping modern-day slavery. We're standing here with many of the organizations and individuals who are assisting in this effort, and we are growing and getting better at it every single day. What we are looking to culminate and begin this January 11th is a National Day on the Focus of Modern-Day Slavery, and by encouraging year-round awareness against human trafficking and all other forms of modern-day slavery, also honoring the victims of modern-day slavery, and reminding the American people of their obligation to be good neighbors and get involved with protection of their communities and this most vulnerable population. At this time, I'd like to bring forward the man who is the founder of FACE, Paul Nissan, so he can explain what his activity will be and how he's going to assist us here in Los Angeles. Paul?
Good morning, Council President Garcetti. Thank you for having us here. We're happy to be here in chambers with the city council. I represent an organization called March Against Terror USA. Our commitment is to fight all forms of terror, what we call the three faces of terror, i.e. global terrorism, oppressive rulership, and human exploitation. Human trafficking, no doubt, is the worst form of human exploitation, and we're committed to this fight to the very end. We think if we can work with governing bodies, NGOs, and also businesses, we can accomplish what we need to do to win this war against modern-day slavery. I would like to thank you for adopting this resolution designating January 11th as the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness in the city of Los Angeles and acknowledging the FACE program. As we go forward, we're going to invite you to participate in our efforts to organize an effort to where it will be a model for the country to use as a united front against human trafficking and all other forms of modern-day slavery. If we succeed in modeling the situation here in Los Angeles as a genesis to this effort, we believe that this problem will be resolved in short order. Thank you again for your endorsement of this effort, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. With that, I'd like to present this resolution to the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness to Paul Nissan, the founder of FACE, and also welcoming him to Los Angeles and the efforts of their organization to join this coalition to end human trafficking here in Los Angeles, and hopefully, in our lifetime, we'll see the end to human trafficking around the world. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Cardenas, and I want to thank you, Paul, and all the folks that are here today as well as a part of this. Councilmember Cardenas has led the way here in Los Angeles to making sure this issue gets the attention in law enforcement that it deserves, and I know for all of us, it's a very near and dear issue. I know Mr. Weiss has worked on this issue as well, and we've seen some great organizations in the city like CAST, the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking as well, work on this, so thank you. We do have a quorum now, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruehl, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. If we can just run through the agenda real quick?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosenthal seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
As Gruehl moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds, if there's no objection, that two will be approved.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearing. Items one through seven are street lighting ordinances.
Okay. We have one through seven. Is there action to approve them today or to open them and continue?
Yes, it is. No, to approve them.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? Cards, but that's for special one. There are no cards, so we'll open and close, or we'll close that public hearing. Any council members wishing to call them special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next items, please.
And I'm sorry, Mr. President, just for council's information, those ordinances do go over for one week.
Since we don't have 12 members, colleagues, those will be carried over. Next items, please.
Next items are also public hearing items. Items eight and nine are street lighting districts, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to October 27th.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on those today? If not, we will open the public hearings and continue those till the 27th of October without objection. So ordered. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 10, and that is also an ordinance, and it's related to the altered dog license fee.
Okay. Anybody wish to call that special, colleagues? Item number 10, the dog license fee. Seeing no council members wishing to call that special, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. That two will be carried over one week. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 17, and I understand, Mr. President, on item number 11, there is a new ordinance on the file, and that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. That has been circulated. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on items 11 through 17? Mr. Weiss, number 11. 12 through 17, colleagues, any specials? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 56, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Before we do that, can we reconsider the ordinances? We now have 12 members with Mr. Padilla, so let's take one through seven and 10, if we can please reconsider those. If there's no objection, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Excuse me, 12 ayes.
Those are back before us. Let's take those as a group. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, the 18 through 56 are before council, and those have not had public hearings.
All right. Do we have any cards on those?
There are, but I don't have the...
Okay, I see 18, 30, 36, 37, 40, 41, 46, and 49. If we can call those special for cards. And any other specials, colleagues, on those items? Any other specials? Going once, one twice, on the balance, let's open the roll. Okay. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, on the continuation agenda is item number 57, and there are two reports on the file. Council cannot up both. Budget and finance concurs with an additional instruction.
All right. We'll move the budget and finance report. I will second that for Mr. Parks. If there's no objection, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item, please.
That would take council back to the items called special, or do you wish to take up the special meeting or public comment?
Let's do the special meeting. If we can call the roll, please.
Cardenas, Gruehl, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. First items, please.
First item on the agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held, is a personnel committee report.
All right, colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on item number one from the special meeting? We have had public hearing?
Yes, there has been a public hearing in committee.
Okay. If nobody wishes to call that special, we will open the roll on special one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items two through four, and I believe there is a card on item number four.
Excuse me, should I go over those again?
I'm sorry, two through four, they have not had public hearings, 10 votes required for consideration. I believe there is a card on item number four.
Okay, we will call that special for cards. The others, we will open and close the public hearing. Specials, colleagues, anybody wishing to call two or three special? And the motion required there, I will move those. I'll move number two, and Mr. Parks, you'll move number, on item three, I'd like to move that. I will second that as well. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Mr. President, since council is in the special meeting, do you wish to take up number four at this time?
Let's continue the special meeting into the regular meeting right now, and we'll line that up with the rest. Okay, let's take up public comment this time, then. I'd like to invite forward Zuma Dogg to be our first speaker, and then Noel Weiss.
Thank you. The mic's loud today, yeah, yeah. First of all, Michael Hunt will be speaking later. He's opening up homeless shelters around town, so please pay attention to him, because I can't think of anything better than a public commenter like him that's doing real things now, yeah, yeah. That's what it's all about. DWP, there was a rate hike that was approved earlier this week, and at first, it sounds bad. Could you say, well, who wants a rate hike? Nobody. So I called DWP, they brought a lot of good points to my attention, such as, it's been a long time since there's been a rate hike. It's only 2.5 when Pasadena had 18%. We need lots more pipes to be laid. You know, the demand on the city, when they made these decades ago, wasn't meant for all these people. There's chlorine treatments that have to be changed, a lot of environmental things, reservoir tanks that have to be put below, recoppering, and so a lot of infrastructure improvement that is needed. And so, Zuma Dogg says, yes, on the DWP fee increase, it went through neighborhood councils, and everybody watching can know that the neighborhood councils does approve this. Most of these tax fee raise things are bad, but this one, we kind of could just say, all right, it's going to be for good things, and we got the cleanest water, even more clean than in bottles, y'all. So save your money, don't buy bottled water, drink it right here, y'all. But I would like to say, special item one, that I wasn't allowed to talk on, is about DWP management giving themselves rate hikes. Okay, so now, they do something good, I mean, not rate hikes at their own, they're giving themselves raises. It's going to cost $4 million, y'all. They're giving themselves $4 million of raises. It's management, not even for the employees that are working hard for us. The management of DWP, why you giving yourself $4 million worth of raises when you just raised our fees? That's how you put a smirch on something good, y'all. So Zuma Dogg brought that to the attention. Right here, somebody gave me this, it's Superior Court of the State of Los Angeles, County, Central District, Witchcell Greens, California Banking, it has to do with mitigation of conditions for tenants, they're getting screwed in Van Nuys, y'all, and here's the civil suit, y'all. Thank you, Noel Weiss, for putting that in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Noel Weiss is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will be our next speaker.
Council members, good morning. If you were all to do a self-portrait, what would it look like? Would it reflect the passion, persistence, courage of basically trying to confront some of these issues that we have, that we're confronting today? Who gets what and why? What are we doing and why? Those are the two key questions that the council basically has to ask. We have a problem with tenant rights in this district. I asked Wendy Gruehl months ago, in April, do you support the current rate of compensation to tenants, or do you not? So far, no answer. We basically, we mediated the situation in Maltman, in Mr. Garcetti's district, we've got 9,000, that's what the market will bear for non-seniors, non-disabled. 23,000 in Lincoln Place, non-seniors, those are seniors and disabled. This, the planners need policy, the planners need direction from you people, and it's not happening, and Mr. Wesson's committee unfortunately may be becoming the burial ground of at least proposals. We need debate, we need understanding, and even if you guys voted down, it's okay to vote it down, but we need the debate. These are not 15 to nothing issues, people, and we have to basically, if it's a question of someone on this council coming up and standing up and saying, okay, invoking Rule 53, whatever it takes, the citizens need it, and we must basically get it now. John F. Kennedy, what he said in terms of going to the moon? Do it, not because it's easy, but because it's hard, because it engages the best of our capabilities, of our skills and energies. It's not, this is a challenge, we should not postpone, we need to confront the issues, we need to do it sooner than later. Hopefully, Mr. Wesson, we don't have to wait another nine months, maybe it's Mr. Westfall's having his first kid, I don't know, but I think when it comes right down to it, hopefully, at some point in time here, we can begin to make something happen, and I look forward to that day. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd is our next speaker. Matt Dowd. All right. Once, twice, gone. Mr. Hunt?
Even in the restroom, okay. Thank you, City Council. Good morning, everybody. Mrs. Gruehl, everybody want Mrs. Gruehl, just go back to the old Mrs. Gruehl, the way you were before. That's the message in chambers. To the people who went to jail for the people who were working, I give big ups to Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, and I think somebody else that went to jail for the actual people over there on Century Street, Mr. Reyes. Bill, that's your district, so I need to see you there, too, because I'm about jobs, homelessness, and things like that. I think that it's all of our responsibilities to provide jobs and provide homes for the homeless. Mrs. Hahn, Mrs. Hahn, people would like you to run for mayor, like your father, you know, they see a lot of your father in you, so I support that issue, too. And on that note, I'm leaving it like that, and you guys, I see you guys want to get out here early, because today's Friday, there's no big celebrations. I agree with you guys. Happy birthday, Mr. Labange, you know, and many more to come, you know. I think that's a congratulations, anytime somebody get a year older. And Rosenthal, we need to fix the 4215. Can we do that? I'm not going nowhere, so it's like, you know, we really need to fix the 4215, we really, and it's in the working I'm doing as much as I can as far as that as well. But when it comes to jobs in African-American community, 72% unemployed, you know, that's, those are, yeah, those are big numbers, so we need to fix that. Any job is a good job at this point.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chuck Tenon.
Good morning, council members. Chuck, Tenon, Valley Village. I want to talk about the unjustifiable destruction of an L.A. city neighborhood, the characterization of a neighborhood of West Magnolia Boulevard in Valley Village, Wendy Gruehl's District Two, which is a highly dangerous and unsafe street that's going to be drastically changed by land developers that plan to demolish existing affordable housing and replace it with high-density, expensive condos for money and not in the interest of good city planning. This is a street that has unmitigatable traffic congestion that could have several hundred condos on it. This street is classified by DOT as a secondary highway, which was built in 1927, over 80 years ago, to accommodate single-family dwellings and not condos. It's a dangerous and unsafe, substandard street with unmitigatable traffic congestion and no storm drain. The problem... The problems that need to be addressed is the cumulative environmental impact on the neighborhood community and the people that live there. No significant unsafe standard conditions, these unsafe conditions will not accommodate several hundred condos, three and four stories. The problems are extreme congestion on a hazardous one-lane in each direction, substandard street, that does not support freeway off-ramps, four schools, inadequate parking, flooding, sewage, several hundred condominiums will not support the 10,000-gallon standard per property for four different developments. Drainage, there's no storm drain on West Magnolia Boulevard. When it rains, it pours like a river over the curb with no diversion to Laurel Canyon, which is a major intersection that has no storm drain. These three problems need to be addressed, needs to be fixed and brought up to 2006 standards before the facts and not after the facts. This is a cumulative impact that must be studied before these cumulative four condo projects go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tannen. Our next speaker is Charlotte Wymer. Charlotte Wymer? And then the next speaker after that will be Sheldon Walter.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Charlotte Wymer, and I am a resident of Van Nuys and have lived at the same address for 33 years. I am a native of the San Fernando Valley, and I'm coming today to ask for your assistance. I have a rear neighbor that has recently added a two-story portion to a home that has butted up to my very narrow back wall, as you can see in the photo. The two-story addition is within 14 feet of my small backyard, and I have absolutely no privacy left in one half or more of my home. I have no backyard space that is even semi-private. I believe this addition and other reported questionable building modifications that were made to this neighboring property to be violations of city zoning regulations and specific restrictions that are shown on this lot, on this photo, excuse me. My calls to city agency have gone unanswered for most part to this day, and my inquiries began as buildings started in March of this year. I have lost tens of thousands of dollars in property value. I have been given no options nor thought by the city's safety, planning, or zoning people, and I have brought, as I said, the photos showing the neighbor's addition that looms over the top of my house, and as well as the zoning restrictions on this map. I would like to request a meeting with city zoning and planning officials to review the information that I have on the property and to answer my concerns, and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much for your comments today, we appreciate them. Sheldon Walter is our next speaker. After that will be Susan Rocha.
Good morning, I'm Sheldon Walter. Good to see you folks meeting here in the valley again. Hope you had no transportation problems in getting here. As you know, the L.A., Los Angeles is making a bid to host the 2016 Olympics. We certainly don't need rough roads and gridlock on L.A. streets and freeways if we're going to have all these people with the Olympics. I, incidentally, have no connection with the L.A. Olympics organizing committee, and at 89, at that time, I wouldn't be participating either. Seventy-three miles of rail rapid transit is definitely inadequate for a city the size of Los Angeles. Most large cities have hundreds of miles of rail transit. True, there's 16 miles under construction, East Side Gold Line, and also the line going out to Culver City. However, more extensions are needed, and I want to commend Wendy Gruel and her committee, Transportation Committee, for working for transportation improvements here in Los Angeles. I think they need more resources in order to improve what we need here for all the people that are coming here. I want to thank you, oh, incidentally, I think there's good council people here that certainly deserve a chance for a third term in order to help some of these transportation problems here. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walter. Susan Rocha? Excuse me for mispronouncing at least once.
Is Rocha.
Rocha, okay, Susan Rocha.
I'm asking you to stop the bullhorns from coming in my house all day long, every day. It's a tape recording from the church on the corner, who wants to put their organ music, their chimes, their bells, from a tape recording, it's an amplified sound system, it's not real bells or real, it's a recording. And it comes to my house five times a day, as loud as can be, every day of the week, and it's very annoying. Some of it sounds like somebody's going like this with their two hands on a piano, and it's enough to drive you out of your mind. Now, this church, they don't have any heart. It's Divine Savior in Cypress Park. Ed Reyes, my council member, already told me that he won't do anything. He won't change the law. Right now, LAPD can't do anything because churches are exempt from the law. They can ring them all night long if they feel like, whenever they feel like. I'm asking for some restrictions on the law. Trinity County has some restrictions. So there are other counties and other places that have restrictions on church noise, how loud it can be, when it can be, the decibels. Right now, they're exempt, they can do whatever they feel like. I'm suffering. I'm really suffering. It's very stressful and mentally agonizing to hear this all day long in my house, because I'm right across the street, and have Ed Reyes tell me that he won't do anything to do anything about it. All I could do is look at the other council members and say, please help me. Please, look at the law. I passed it out, please look at changing the law. You know, this is, this is something wrong with that, when they can just blast in your house anytime they feel like it, okay?
Thank you very much.
So please help me, please put me out of my suffering.
Our next speaker is Vincent Neglia. Welcome, Mr. Neglia. And then after that, Dale Liebowitz. Neglia.
Good morning, Vince Neglia, resident in the Valley Village section of North Hollywood. I just want to call the council's attention to the planning commission's overall review of projects and then approval. As echoed with a prior speaker about the Valley Village growth, it's just going a little bit beyond what the streets can accommodate. We have one project after the other where there's three residences, three individual residences getting reviewed, and then 22 buildings built on top of it. Another 50-unit, 50-unit present building being evaluated for 78 units and so on. What winds up happening is that the planning commission approves these buildings under the present guidelines, but doesn't look at the aggregate effect of all of these projects on the total community. So what I'm asking for the council to do is to give some further direction to the planning commission on looking at the total overall growth of a community, which is already saturated with an amount of residences that those streets can accommodate with more projects constantly coming in. My wife is also interested in this issue, and she has some specific addresses that she might want to discuss with the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dale Liebowitz. Neglia?
Good morning. Good morning, I'm Dale Liebowitz-Neglia. I have resided at my home for 17 years. I've been the president of our homeowners association for the last 10 years, and have served on our homeowners association board for the last 16 years. Prior to that, I worked as a planning commissioner for the city of West Hollywood, and I worked, I was one of the many authors of the West Hollywood General Plan. One of the things I've learned in this amount of time is that to serve a community, the best thing you could do is to be a good steward of the properties on which people reside. I have maps here that I went around last night and just copied all the new development that has come down, and I'll have a copy for everybody, and Magnolia Boulevard between Laurel Canyon and Colfax is a two-way street that has one lane in each direction. It terminates at the 170 freeway, there are six schools in the neighborhood, and there is now a proposal to put another 579 units in this area. Our building alone has, we snake our building four times a year, we have had sewer backups, and that is not during the rainy season. The rainy season, it is far worse, and the infrastructure just cannot support this amount of residences being put in. And it's what my homeowners have asked me to do, I have a petition from them, which I will make a copy of and then submit to the Sergeant-at-Arms, is to ask for a total moratorium in this area until an environmental impact study is done and a total traffic mitigation study is done, so that new development can occur, but it can occur sensibly and without damage. If you decide afterwards that you've made an error, it's a lot like closing the bond door after the horse is out. It doesn't really help us.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to submit that to the Sergeant-at-Arms, we'll make sure that he gets that. Candido Maris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, welcome to Van Nuys, the heart of the San Fernando Valley. I reside at 6179 Van Nuys Boulevard. And Ms. Gruel, I want to thank you. You are what you were then, you are now, you're somebody that really cares about our community, our city, and we're grateful that you're there. Thank you very much for all of your hard work. Just a few months ago, on 7/7/2006, we had a great man here, his name was Guy Galbadon, he died. Mr. Weesar, he was a resident of your area, we're trying to get him his medal that he deserves, but this area here is honored because he walked the grounds here sadly, that he has moved, you know, he has moved on and is now with our Lord. Let's talk about the real issue. Item one, special one, folks, the DWP managers' raises. Did anybody watch the Board of Water and Power Commission meeting on Tuesday? Mr. Nahai stated, and I quote, "That management was found to be woefully incompetent in regards to six investigations that took place." Six! Millions of dollars have been wasted, many lawsuits will be filed, and yet you approved management an increase? What an embarrassment. What an embarrassment. For four years, for three years, at that same time, coming through the Small Business Advisory Committee, we've been able to save the people of this great city millions of dollars by the discounts they're capturing now, by contracts that were canceled now, and yet you want to give the Department of Water Power Management an increase, a pay increase? That's an insult to the public. Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and welcome to Van Nuys.
It's always a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Candido. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker. Sharon Brewer?
Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer, and I'm here to talk about the wildlife abuse that's allowed to happen at Lake Balboa. Before I show me you my pictures, I'd like to show you some of the things that people use when they're fishing. Water bottles and Coke cans, these twigs that they leave lying around with hooks on them. I ended up getting this out of a tree, that the tree was fishing. It has hooks, line, and nobody there. Now to my pictures. I've been before you before with pictures, the last time was a pelican. This is called a Ross goose, and it has fishing line around its leg. It's tight around both legs. This is another one closer with the fishing line and around it. No hooks. This is a picture after it got rescued. This is the indentation caused by the fishing line around it. I had been before you about the pelican, it did get rescued, that was a fishing line on the day that it got rescued. This is a picture of people fishing with the water bottles. There's no enforcement whatsoever at the lake because they don't stock the lake. This is a sign with a fishing pole. It also just discusses not feeding the birds. These are fishing poles. There's like about five of them. These are some hooks and sinkers that were found in the trash. Feeding of migratory birds at Lake Balboa. Not supposed to be doing these, these are Canada geese and should not be hand-fed. This is someone feeding the regular geese. You can notice the size of the load.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. If you'd like to give some of the other photos, we'd be happy to send them on the horseshoe.
All right, basically.
That's the time we have for today, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to conclude.
Something needs to be done, please.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Carlos Martinez, we actually have a number of folks from El Centro de Pueblo like to come together, Sabrina Ortega, Sarah Flores, and Oscar Martinez, if you'd like to come forward together, please. Welcome, nice to see you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank all of the council members for being very supportive for the Family Development Network programs across the city of L.A. Centro de Pueblo is a lead agency, and I'm the director of the FDN program. I stand before you, asking for additional support. I know that you did support special item number three through October 31st, but I am also requesting that you continue providing additional support for all the FDN programs beyond that deadline into March 07. These are agencies that are providing human services to families in need and in crisis, and also we deal with juvenile offenders, and we are assisting them in rehabilitating them. We need a long-term plan in being able to address the CDBO process, which might not be the best option for all the FDN programs. I am requesting for you to look into general funds or unrestricted funds for future funding in order to help us, and we have additional staff here that will speak, some of my partners, but also other FDN lead agencies that will be talking within a couple of minutes, as well as some family members. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, before we take the next speaker, I'm going to reconsider, this was special item number three, and my apologies, because we should have had a public hearing on that, we passed it through, and I think we thought it was regular item number three, so we're going to hold it on the desk for just a moment, we'll have everybody come in, we'll testify one at a time, so can we open the roll on reconsideration of special item three, please? Oh, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, we're going to call that special, and in a few minutes, we'll invite everybody back. Thank you for your patience, we want to make sure we get through our general public comment first, okay? Our next speaker, we have two more speakers for general public comment, Daniel Weisman is next, and then Matt Dowd, those will be our last two speakers for general comment. Mr. Weisman, your time, sir? You're before us. And then, Mr. Dowd, please come forward. Mr. Dowd? You're up.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Did you miss me? Never mind. I missed you. Welcome to Van Nuys again. We have good news, we have bad news, and I'm going to end with good news. I'm sorry that I did not bring enough copies of the full document that I brought, I hope Mr. Rosenthal, Ms. Zine, Ms. Han, Mr. Zine, Mr. Padilla will have these in hand now, and I'll promise to give you full copies of the full documentation of what I'm about to bring forward. The good news is, and Bill Fujioka was here, the little budget is out now, and I want everybody, certainly in back of me as well as everyone in front of me, to know about this wonderful document that tells us what the budget holds for this year. It's an extraordinarily useful document, and the budget process which is going on in the neighborhood councils right now is extremely important to know what that is. Mr. Smith was one of the best people in bringing the information forward to us a few years ago in August, I'll never forget that meeting, Greg, thanks so much for it. The bad news, you know it, you've seen in front of you, and I think later, is the mayor's have held, on the selection of the new general manager, I'm very much opposed to her continuation in this office, much less her extension. She's violated pretty much all the principles of good management, pretty much all the principles that have been assigned to her by the charter and the plan, and they include such issues as issues related to the election procedures. I'm not going to go into details of the document that I provide with you.
Five seconds for your good news.
All right. The good news, then. All right, I'll allow you to read this at your convenience. I've had the opportunity to speak to some of your representatives.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weisman, I don't think we'll be able to get to your good news today.
The good news is that I will, that I will also, in this document, explain some of the changes that I would propose.
Please, please hold on one second, sir.
Thank you for hearing me to say I will explain and offer changes to be proposed. I thank you for your courtesy.
Mr. Labange? Do you want to? Okay. All right, Mr. Dowd, please.
Yeah, Matt Dowd, M-A-T-T-D-O-W-D. Find me at mattdowd.com. Got some songs up there, MP3s. I'm just bringing commercial vending to Channel 35, so don't mind me. I've taken all the videos down off YouTube, so you can rest easy, Greg, the sleeping one. I don't know if you've seen that. I pulled them all down because no one's subsidizing them, and I don't think I should be giving you any more publicity. You get enough already, just like the mayor today on Channel 5. I mean, what a scam that was. But, look, I've got to go back to history, one of my favorite topics. If you don't learn the mistakes from the past, then you are doomed to repeat them. And a pattern I see emerging now is a white police chief engaging police forces into downtown on a massive scale, and it's only a matter of time before an injustice breaks out, which, you know, you know what happened in '92. Why don't we just bring the deputy chief in now? Earl Peizinger? Get rid of Bratton? You know, we need a black police chief. It's as simple as that. People aren't happy with this guy. Too much racism going on in the police force. It's happening down at Venice Beach, too. They're arresting black people for selling things on the beach with permits. I've got to mention ethics, too, as well, as usual. Ethics panel to investigate Foley scandal. Homosexual men hitting on young boys. That's exactly what it is. See, in America, you can be free for three years to get away with that shit, but you can't sell incense down on Venice Beach. Wow, I'm done.
I would ask you to please watch your language. We've got young people that are here. That closes our public comment. I would remind folks, while you do have the freedom to exercise the First Amendment, we would hope that people would exercise their discretion, especially when we have young children in the room of what would be proper for them. That takes us back to our presentation. Sir, if you cannot, if you cannot sit here, I'll ask the guards to please warn our audience members.
What are you going to do to me? What are you going to do?
All right. We now have before us the presentations. I'd like to recognize Mr. Smith to make two presentations.
I'd ask Mr. Zine to join me on this. And... Where's the certificate? Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zine's going to be joining me in just a moment. Today, we're going to honor an organization called Hope Unit Foundation for Bereavement and Transition. It's one of the oldest and largest bereavement support groups in Los Angeles. Been here for 35 years now. It is their 35th anniversary, and we're very happy to have them with us today. It's a nonprofit, non-denominational organization, offering seven weekly therapeutic support groups for widows, widowers, and those who lost loved ones. It's a cancer support group, and two bimonthly alumni groups in two locations, a total of 10 support groups in the community. The Hope Unit Foundation stands for hope, opportunities, participation, and education. Hope healing process and hope for healing grief, opportunities for people who grow and learn from each other, participation in healing the group atmosphere, and education about the grieving process. And I'd like to also turn this over to Mr. Zine to say a few words about hope as well. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Smith. Hope's mission is to help people whose lives have been touched by loss by providing group support, educational programs, and information to help alleviate the burdens and loneliness that exists in bereavement with cancer. The group are led by long-established teams of experienced licensed therapists who are required to have additional training beyond their credentials, which Hope provides. Every person will ultimately lose a loved one and experience grief and mourning. Unaddressed grief can result in serious illness and great depression. So, it's with the support that you folks give to those that are in need that we acknowledge you. Councilmember Smith, myself, the city council acknowledges you. I understand 1971, 35 years you've been providing this service, and there's facilities in both of our districts. So, we acknowledge you. We thank you. And the people who are touched by the assistance you provide, I'm sure, are very appreciative. So, we don't oftentimes say thanks. Maybe it's been 35 years in common, but today, we're doing it to thank and show our appreciation. Thank you all very much.
And we have Marilyn Stolzman, who is the executive director here. Marilyn, would you like to say a couple of words briefly?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce two board members, Jerry Moskowitz and Bill Frankenstein, and my co-author Gloria Intimans, who is a member of the program, and Hal, who helped behind the scenes to help us get recognition. I'd like to thank Councilman Zine and Councilman Smith, and let you know you could reach Hope at 818-788-HOPE. We have bereavement support groups in Los Angeles, as well as the valley. We cover your districts. We're eager to serve constituents who are suffering with loss of a loved one, loss of spouse, loss of a family member, and we need your support and as well as your recognition in maintaining our programs. I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And as I said, everybody will sometime in their life go through the grief of a loss of a spouse or a loved one, and so there's a services available to everybody, and we hope they'll take advantage of it. Thank you very much.
Let me just add a couple more comments to that. We appreciate what you're doing, and I know Councilman Smith and I both served in the Los Angeles Police Department as officers, and many times when death notifications are made, they're made to an individual, and there's no one there to assist them at that time. This is a wonderful resource, and we're going to provide these phone numbers to the police department. Many times that they can utilize that service for that individual whose loved one was victimized or died in a traffic collision, wherever the case may be, they need someone to turn to. And I know I've made many death notifications to families, and you wonder if there's a resource available. Obviously, this is a wonderful resource that I was not aware of until we became aware of it now. So, we will be spreading that with the police department and the fire department. Thank you all. Again, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second group I have here today is an organization which we've talked about a lot in this city and the valley in particular over the recent years. It's California State University in Northridge, and I'm very pleased to have the professors come forward, and also Mr. Hillbrand, who's the vice president. Cal State University in Northridge is an organization that's a university in our valley that we're all very proud of here in the valley, but has taken a step forward to a new level. Cal State Northridge, over the last few years, has become not just a great local school, not just a great regional school, but a school of national recognition in many fields and many disciplines. And the university has been getting a reputation around the country as one of our top universities, and we're very proud of Cal State Northridge. But particularly today, I want to recognize a group of professors that have done an accomplishment at Cal State Northridge that is truly deserving of our recognition. This year, a team of professors led by biology professor Mary Alena Zavala received a National Institute for Health and Support for Continuous Research Excellence grant for research that could benefit the public's health. The four-year, $7 million grant will go toward research at Cal State University in Northridge on subject range from aging, genetics, and stem cells to drug manufacturing process. And I mean to make that as this legitimate drug manufacturing, not illicit, which we have a problem with here in the valley. We're proud to recognize important contribution made by Cal State Northridge faculty, particularly Professor Zavala, biology professor. I'm also joined today with assistant psychology professor Luciana Lagana, and also biology professor Stephen Oppenheimer. Cal State Northridge is truly one of the great institutions in the San Fernando Valley. It has taken it to a whole new level, and as we look at the city of Los Angeles being a leader now nationally and internationally in the biotech industry and research, particularly, Cal State Northridge has stepped up to the plate and has really hit a home run with a $7 million grant, and we're just so proud of Cal State Northridge, what's going on there. But particularly, you're receiving this great national grant, which is going to really benefit the people of all this country as you work through it in the next couple of years. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, but in particular, those of us who represent the valley, we're very proud of what you've accomplished. We're very proud of what's going on at Cal State Northridge, and it's a great university and great institution in our valley. And congratulations on your $7 million grant. What a great grant. Would you say a few words?
The, this grant represents an opportunity not just for faculty to conduct research, but also an opportunity for outreach to the community, and we include students in all of our projects. So, it's a way that affects the students who go to Cal State Northridge, and also there could be down-the-road benefits to the citizenry of the valley and of the nation. So, we thank you for your support, and we hope we do well. We expect to do well. Thanks again.
Thank you. And we'll be presenting, there's another half dozen or so professors that aren't here today. They're doing their duty teaching, I presume, I hope, but we'll be presenting them resolutions as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and congratulations to CSUN and the entire cadre of recipients. If we can return to our meeting, and if there's no objection, taking special three out of order, since we have quite a few speaker cards on that, I would move that. Seeing no objection, we will take that up next. I'd like to invite forward some of our other speakers on this. Sabrina Ortega, I'm going to set the clock at a minute per speaker, and Sarah Flores will be next, and then Oscar Martinez will be third. Sabrina Ortega?
Morning. I would just like to address the council. I am, sorry. I am a counselor for the Family Development Network program out of El Centro de Pueblo, and I do serve families and individuals, and I would just like to ask for the council's support in the funding FDM programs throughout the city. Our program alone serves the Eagle Rock area, Crenshaw area, Pico Union, Hollywood, Echo Park, and as far to El Sereno. And we do provide a lot of services to these families and to our youth, and I would just like to, again, ask for your support and help us extend the funding and keep our program alive so that we can continue to serve our families. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for our community as well. Sarah Flores?
I just want to ask for you guys to, if you guys can support the FDM program, because I've been coming for about three years now, and they've helped me out a lot and my family, and I really don't know where I would be without them. So, I really would hope that you guys can keep on supporting them.
Thank you. Oscar Martinez, to be followed by Maria Torres and Ana Beoso.
Good morning. My name is Oscar Martinez. I'm here to speak on funding for the Development Family Development Network. I'd like to say that I was told that the funding was going to be cut, and I don't know what people like myself and the community would do without something like this. I mean, I've been going there for three years now. I have, I'm a father of three teenagers. My kids made a complete turnaround. My son is working. He's graduated from high school. My other son is still in high school. He's about to graduate. His grades went from D to F to A, Bs, and Cs. So, you know, like I said, I don't know what people like myself would do without this program. So, I hope that you can all please continue the funding for a program like this, and please support them.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Ana? No, sorry, Maria? Maria Torres?
Hi. My name is Maria Torres. I'm with Inquilinos Unidos. I'm a tenant organizer there. The service Inquilinos Unidos does under the, under El Centro de Pueblo's FDM program that covers different council districts. A safety net component is housing rights. Inquilinos Unidos, through education, organizing, and advocacy, is able to hold the tenants' hand and help tenants avoid evictions, discrimination, owner harassment, and we also help them get repairs in their units. I'm urging you to extend the funding through October 31st, 2006, and I urge you to fund us through 2007, also throughout the years that come. Without this program, we wouldn't be able to hold our tenants' hand through the process of evictions, unfair evictions, unfair harassment, discrimination, what have you. So, please, fund the FDM program. We really need it.
Thank you very much. Ana Beoso, and then Cindy Ho, and then Beatriz Sanchez.
Yes, I'm a case manager for Chinatown Service Center. We're funding on the FDM program throughout Centro de Pueblo, and we're asking that the funds do not be cut. A lot of our clients have really nowhere else to go for services. Just yesterday, we had a crisis with somebody that was kicked out in the middle of the night with a one-year-old, and she came to our offices, and we managed to take her to a safe place to spend the night for the evening. And if our services were not there, these people would end up on the street. The child was, you know, half-dressed. He was hungry. Mother was in tears, and our counselors were able to assist her, and she was Chinese-speaking, so there were no shelters available that we can actually take her to because they couldn't meet her language capability. So, these are kind of the services that we provide. We, you know, provide advocacy. Anything that the clients need, you know, we're there for them, and a lot of these people have nowhere else to go than to come to us and receive the services from Chinatown Service Center to El Centro and all the FDM agencies that are within the FDM program. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Ho, and I'm also working in the Chinatown Service Center, and I'm the case manager, and I'm serving a lot of families there. Asian, they don't know, say, any English. They need the advocacy, and they need the translation services, and a lot of them also are new immigrants. They don't know where to look for services, like even the schools, or a lot of help they need, or transportation. Like, currently, I'm working with a lot of, like, domestic violence parents, and they don't know where to look for services. They are in crisis. They really need our help to support them and advocate for them, and they really need the services, and I hope that you can keep the FDM program because, like, without the services, they don't know where to go to, and they don't, like, know, they don't know where to look for services. Hope that you can keep the services and the FDM program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bea Sanchez, followed by Belanira Reyes.
Hi, good morning. My name is Beatriz Sanchez. I'm here to give you the thank you for all your support to the program FDM. I want to the clients in this program, and this program helped me a lot to get all the information, all the help with my family, and with my family, by, and other people, all the people in the community. This program is a lot, a lot support everybody, and I come to ask you to help to us to maintain these programs for all the communities we lead in, ignoring what programs you guys have for us. All the information we get for this program is a lot to help to us to survive in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Belanira Reyes, followed by Betty Lopez.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Belanira Reyes. Vengo como cliente de FDM. Este programa nos ha ayudado bastante a nosotros como comunidad del barrio chino. Nosotros estamos ahí para, nosotros venimos a pedir que ellos nos ayuden a nosotros. Nosotros somos personas de bajos ingresos. Necesitamos todos estos programas que nos ayuden porque estos programas nos ayudan bastante con nuestros hijos, con consejería.
We need this program because this program is very helpful for our children, and it's also in the Chinatown, and it's very helpful for our children with counseling.
Nosotros queremos que mantengan todos estos programas.
We want you to keep these programs, please.
Si quitan estos, todos estos programas, nosotros a dónde vamos a pedir ayuda?
Where we are going to go, to ask for help if you don't have these programs.
Nosotros venimos aquí para pedirles y que mantengan todos estos programas. Nosotros, en realidad, lo necesitamos.
We are here to request you to keep these programs because we actually need them.
Gracias.
Nosotros, nosotros queremos que mantengan todos estos programas.
We want you to keep these programs, please.
Si, si quitan estos, todos estos programas, nosotros, ¿a dónde vamos a pedir ayuda?
Where we are going to go to ask for help if you don't have these programs.
Nosotros venimos aquí para pedirles y que mantengan todos estos programas. Nosotros, en realidad, lo necesitamos.
We are here to request you to keep these programs because we actually need them.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Lopez, followed by Olga Antuna.
Sí, yo vengo por el Centro de Pueblo, de Chinatown. Y yo vengo para que no quiten la ayuda porque a mí me ha ayudado mucho mi familia siendo que es una ayuda necesaria y la verdad pues no sabría tampoco dónde ir a buscar ayuda. Para mí, mi familia es muy importante porque me ayudaron tanto en la escuela como en mi hogar.
I'm here to let you know that the FDN program had helped my family a lot and I wouldn't know where to go without this program. And the family is very important for me and I want you to know that they really have helped us a lot.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Olga, followed by Teresa Padua.
Hi, mi nombre es Olga Antuna. Soy un programa, soy de, vengo de cliente del programa FDN. El programa me ha ayudado a mí y a mi familia, a mis hijos, a recibir una ayuda especial para mi hija y gracias a este programa, mi hija se pudo graduar y, y por eso vengo para que no haya recortes en ese programa.
I'm here to talk about the FDN program. They have helped my daughter a lot and thanks to this program, my daughter was able to finish school and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Padua, followed by Christine Calderon.
Good morning, President Garcetti and the council. Good to see you. My name is Teresa Padua. I'm the director of the Hollywood Sunset Free Clinic. We are part of the FDN program. And the FDN program is working. It has worked for us in the community. We are asking that you continue the services. We at the clinic have over 100 people on the FDN program and we do not know where to put them or where they would go. An example is, we, we work with high-risk youth. And the high-risk youth from some of the local schools bring them over. Some of them are suicidal. Some of them have major mental health issues. And our advocate, our case manager helps them through this program. It's a successful program. We need it to be continued, not just for three months, not for six months, but it needs to be continued. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Christine, followed by Carlos Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Christine Calderon and I am program manager of Search Involved Filipino Americans. In our communities, there exist families without any privileges of medical coverage, not having a job, not having a habitable place to live in, and are victims of domestic violence, victims of all kinds of abuse. Some are constantly facing depression, anxiety and many other issues in life. These are just some of the problems that I have encountered from people that live in our community. In SEPA's caseload alone is over 50 families being served that continues to place the conflicts that I've mentioned. How many more faces and bodies are going to go on like this? And we really need the FDN program. Family Development Network Program has given each of these persons an opportunity to attain a better life. The Family Development Network provides a safety net for families to communicate better, find a job, find housing for their very low income status and get case management, counseling, parenting class with any cost to these underprivileged people. And most importantly, the FDN program gives each one of these human beings a more dignified life, a life without shame and a life with hope. Don't take away our future, don't take away our hope, and don't take away our FDN. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Martinez, followed by Brenda Aguado.
Actually, I spoke earlier, so I do, thank you for giving me another opportunity here.
Thank you, Carlos. Brenda.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Brenda Aguado. I'm representing New Economics for Women. I'm director of case management and we serve the Pico Union, Hollywood, Sunset and any of, anyone else that walks through our doors. I'm here to urge you to continue the funding for FDN through March 2007 and using this time to find sources and allocation for funding for future years. I believe that the FDN, and I see it every day, the services they provide for the working poor to become self-sufficient in a city where most families are living under poverty. We give parenting classes, guidance, facilitation, advocacy. We provide affordable housing, rental assistance, furniture assistance, food vouchers. We work with and collaborate with many agencies to provide the services that families need for basic living and then to raise themselves to the next level and giving them the tools that they need to become, you know, self-sufficient with their families. And all the extended services that we provide, I know have changed many of the people's lives. Thank you and I urge you to find funding. Thank you very much.
Close this public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Wondering if we can ask staff to come forward? And I want to thank everybody while we have staff from CDD coming forward who's come down. I mean, you represent the, the cutting edge, you represent the, the very, the frontier that we all depend on in our communities and the constituents that we represent. I mean, my friends at the Free Clinic and at El Centro, New Economics for Women, SEPA. You, you are providing critical services and I want you to know that we not only hear you today, we have been hearing you throughout the year. I wanted to establish a little bit of the history of why we are where we're at so we can talk a little bit publicly about how we can get out of where we're at. Mr. Weston has provided great leadership on this. I want to also single out Mr. Parks. But really, all of us on this council, just even as you were speaking, people said, oh, this is about the CBDOs. We feel this impact ourselves very deeply. And while we're getting ourselves a temporary solution, what has happened at the federal level, which has made these changes, which has basically dried up our funding source for all of you, we have to solve that problem, know that we are working hard to do that. But every single council member depends on this network. Just as you give that help out, we depend on that in our communities too. So I want you to hear that first. If you could hold my time, if you would let us know a little bit about how we got here. I know we've talked about this in committee, but just establish for the record a little bit what changes happened with HUD and, and why we are where we're at.
Okay. I'm Sharon Morris, Assistant General Manager of Community Development Department. And basically, we're, we're here today because we were able to establish the, the Family Development Network process to do exactly what that last speaker was talking about, to really help poor, working families become self-sustaining and to improve their life here in the city of Los Angeles. We were able to put these, these networks together using a provision of the regulations that allowed us to bypass some of the more difficult requirements for the city of Los Angeles using a provision saying they could be substantially similar. And HUD has now told us that we are not able to use that any longer and we need to bring everyone into compliance, which would mean...
Just to pause you there for one second. For folks at home, in layperson's terms, essentially, a funding stream from this came from the federal government.
That's right. Through our, our Community Development Block Grant.
And the federal government is now saying that we can't use this money anymore on these groups because they don't qualify under the strict federal guidelines, which they've kind of tightened up.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so the organizations are in the process of trying to become qualified under the new guidelines and with varying degrees of success.
What are some of the changes that need to happen in each organization to qualify?
Among the changes that need to be, to happen is 51% of their board needs to, to live in the, live or work in the area that they are serving. They need to be either low and moderate income themselves or to be the representative of a low and moderate income constituency. They need to define in their, in their bylaws and charter that they, a specific geographic area that they serve and make economic development a provision within, within their bylaws and their, and their governing documents. And many of our agencies, our larger agencies, they are, that would have difficulty trying to come into compliance with that. They're looking at forming subsidiaries, which takes a little bit of time and is, you know, a very tricky business model. Everybody has to look at how they can best do, run their organization and provide the services that we're really depending upon them to operate.
So, so for any of the groups that are out there that have found the situation, Community Development Department is there to walk them through the new requirements, to help assist them in any changes, getting more community members on their board, for instance, seeing whether or not if they can't do that, if they're a large enterprise, whether they can help incorporate a subsidiary or, or an allied agency that would do the same work, have a similar name, but would be able to qualify for these funds?
Yes, we're, we're trying to work closely with them. Again, we don't want to specifically tell them how to operate their business, but we're giving as much guidance as we can so that they can make a, a good decision for themselves.
And, and know, I mean, the folks that are out there, and I know you represent just the tip of the iceberg, there are so many groups that are part of FDN that couldn't be here today, that we know the need that is out there still. We know the poverty that is out there. We know the, I've never mentioned Inquilinos Unidos when I, the list, the renters' rights and, and the interactions that they have every single day, the family concerns, the mental health concerns. And I know that oftentimes we saw in the past, that was something that the county was supposed to do and it speaks volumes about the city, that the city built this system in the first place with the partners because we said, you know, it's the same people we represent, the county represents. We're not going to not lead simply because it's not in our narrow job description. We will continue to look and, and the bottom line, we've had this conversation, we probably have it two to three, every, sorry, two or three months, we have a conversation about, look, there goes Washington again, our housing dollars, our community development dollars. We have seen these steadily erode from Washington. It's certainly not an excuse, but we can never miss the opportunity to say and to speak as one voice, that our representatives in, in Washington, this administration, our Congress cannot ignore our voices. They cannot cut the neediest parts of our society and send, spend money and send money overseas when we have the need so great here. And I, I want to say that again because it's important for us as Americans to continue to organize around that idea, that we can't just fight over a pie that is either narrowing or a pie that is not even there anymore when they change the rules as they have done. That said, this city needs to have Plan B too, all of us, because we've depended on federal dollars to do a lot of things that are still very near and dear to us, that where possible and where we can't find federal dollars, we have to have a real gut check about what we will do with our own dollars, as we're doing right now. We're helping get through this period with other dollars that are our own discretionary dollars, in some cases, our general fund dollars. We have to figure out where we take that from. But at the end of the day, this is as high a priority as public safety. In fact, this is a part of public safety. This is as high a priority as building parks. In fact, this is part of recreation and health. This is as high a priority as making sure that people don't hit the emergency rooms because when we have clinics and others that are out there, they can help us save those costs. But we need others to be our partners as well. And I would just ask the CAO, I know this council continues to say it's a high priority to work with the mayor's office in this coming year to make sure as the budget rolls out that we have a plan that'll take us not just through this next year or two, but that will keep the Family Development Network alive, robust and growing even if necessary as we see that need out there. So thank you again to my friends who have come here, thank you again to Mr. Parks for leading the way and making sure this gets pushed through. And thank you to Mr. Weston for waiving this out of committee to make sure that those paychecks can get out there to these groups that are providing that health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And if we could trade spots for a minute?
Let me recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Quick, quick switch. I want to thank all the speakers who came today. We've had this item in Budget Committee as well and through our many discussions, we have said to the department, and I know she has heard us loud and clear, that these organizations who may or may not be able to qualify for the CBDOs need to get full funding through March. And I know this is a month, but I will continue to remind people that we need a greater amount of time to be able to provide to the FDNs, to some legal aid organizations and others. We made a, from, from my perspective, we made a commitment when we adopted this months ago. Unfortunately, without, I think, the understanding of the implications if entities did not or were not able to be eligible to be CBDOs. And so I think we have to do the right thing and fund through March. And we're continuing to look for those funds, but I just want to assure all of you, we appreciate not only you being here today, but what you do every single day in trying to help those families that may have no other resources and to help them get the services that they, they desperately need. And so we just want you to, to be assured that there are those of us on the city council that want to be true to our commitment and the vote that we took previously and support you in this effort. And so we'll be looking to the department to come back with a plan that makes you whole. It puts off unfortunately some of our problems we're going to have to deal with coming in March, but I do think that we have to live by our, our commitment and to support those organizations. So thank you for taking the time to come out here today to the San Fernando Valley and make your voices heard. We support you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. And with that, let's open the roll. This, this action today will have the funding for this period, so it's a positive action that hopefully the council will take again. If we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And thank you again, Ms. Morris, for all the work CDD is doing. That, that passes and we'll send that to the mayor right away. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. If we can return to the other items called special, please.
First item called special on the regular meeting is item number 11 and that was called special by Councilmember Weiss and there is a new ordinance that has been distributed.
Okay, since it is a new ordinance, I would open and do not see any cards for the public hearing, close the public hearing. I'm sorry, you have, you have a card? Okay, why don't you come forward? I don't have, have that in here for some reason. Oh, I do. It was out of order. We do have two cards. Please, Elliot. And, and Michael Pfeiffer will be next. Please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Elliot Thompson. I'm with the law firm of Jeffery Mangles, Butler and Marmaro. We represent the Los Angeles Lodging Association. We have been and continue to work with City Attorney Asha Greenberg, who's been responsible for drafting this ordinance. We appreciate her work on this issue and the changes she's made to this ordinance that we believe will make it much more effective. In fact, we've been in touch with her as recently as yesterday to try to obtain clarity on a notice requirement for when police officers wish to go through a hotel's entire registration records for the past 90 days. We're thankful that there is a provision that the ordinance states that whenever possible, the inspection shall be conducted at a time and in a manner that minimizes any interference with the operation of the business. However, we believe that this is vague and ill-defined and does not meet the proper time, place and manner requirements for an administrative search or other forms of warrantless searches under the U.S. Constitution. In order to properly comply with all requirements of this ordinance, lodging operators must be given some type of notice so that they can ensure a knowledgeable employee of company records will be on hand with all 90 days of the records in perfect order. Since lodging operators are required to maintain proper records, a short notice is all that we're required, is all that we're asking for, such as 10 or 12 hours. Or perhaps the, the ordinance could be modified that would allow only one week's worth of registration records that would be required to be shown to police at any time without any notice. And again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. My apologies, Elliot. Thank you. Michael Pfeiffer is next.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue today. I'm Mike Pfeiffer. I'm the executive director of the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. The Hotel Association is a nonprofit organization with a 70-year history, beginning as a Southern California Business Association Hotel Motel Group and evolving into today's Hotel Association of Los Angeles. Our membership includes over 80 hotels and 50 suppliers to the hotel and lodging industry in the city and county of Los Angeles. We worked very effectively with the city attorney's office and council staff regarding this ordinance affecting hotel guest registrations and have been very pleased with the positive response we have received to our proposed changes in this ordinance so hoteliers can effectively comply with its requirements. There are some nuances still, I think, to be ironed out in the operation of it and implementation, but we realize that new personal information recording requirement as set forth in this ordinance may require new security policies for hotels. We plan to assist our hotel members with this process. We certainly support the need to be helpful to law enforcement investigations and to work closely with the city for the reduction of crime in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That closes our, our public hearing on the item. I'd like to call on Councilmember Zine, who Mr. Weiss called it special for, and then Mr. Smith will be our next speaker after that. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Weiss for calling the special. The Police Department, can please come forward along with Ms. Greenberg?
If you hold my time, Mr. President. Thank you. Good morning, Asha.
Good morning, council members. Mr. President, Asha Greenberg, Assistant City Attorney. I'll give you a brief report of this ordinance. This is in response to a council motion of March 8th and essentially it updates a very old ordinance to make it, make it address law enforcement concerns primarily relating to hourly rentals, short-term rentals, cash-bait guests and guests without reservations. We made a number of changes after the Public Safety Committee hearing and those were made in response to concerns expressed by the Hotel Association and the Lodging Association. Specifically, we made a change to the definition of walk-in guests so that... to hourly rentals, short-term rentals, cash-paying guests, and guests without reservations. We made a number of changes after the Public Safety Committee hearing, and those were made in response to concerns expressed by the Hotel Association and the Lodging Association. Specifically, we made a change to the definition of walk-in guests so that a reservation, so that defines it as a guest who does not have a reservation that was made prior to the time that he or she checks into the hotel. Formerly, it was, the reservation had to be made at least 24 hours before. We also made a change to the hotel record information and made it clear that the information has to be provided by the guest. Another concern that we addressed was the fact that the Hotel Association indicated that they intend to, at some time in the future, go to some kind of an electronic check-in which might eliminate the need for personal contact with the guest. And in order to address that, we added 2B, which states that if such a process is to be utilized, then that has to be approved by the Police Commission. Also, under Guest Obligations Number Six, we changed the language to address the Hotel Association's concern that, this being Los Angeles, that there are celebrities who might have other people check in on their behalf. So essentially, we have addressed all of their concerns. The L.A. Lodging Association, as you heard, retains a concern that there is no advance notice provided. We feel this is not legally required, that it's important that LAPD be allowed to make unannounced inspections because if they don't, there will be a tendency to, to enter inaccurate information to comply with the ordinance, and that is not the intent of the ordinance at all. I've also looked at ordinances of other cities, and not a single one of them has a advance notice requirement. So this very much tracks the requirements that other cities impose on hotels and motels.
Sure.
Good morning. Police Officer Michael Dickus for Los Angeles Police Department, work Vice Division, formerly Administrative Vice Section. I'm here today just basically to explain why this ordinance should still be in effect, and I'll have a little bit of a rebuttal for the reasons for no prior notice. Number one, why it should be in effect. Not only does this particular ordinance protect the motel owner by having the knowledge of who's staying in their rooms to protect them from any kind of vandalization or criminal activity occurring on their property, it also allows the police to conduct investigations in looking for victims, witnesses for other crimes that may occur on their property or in or around their area. Secondly, generally criminals, specifically narcotics users, prostitutes, gang members, parolees, don't want to be identified or don't have ID on them. Third, the current law in effect is relatively vague and does need to be redefined. Fourth, I believe that many of the motels that I do inspect have inadequate record-keeping, and I do think that this law will deter certain illegal activity and under-the-table operations, which is common in motel operations. Lastly, this holds motel owners accountable for who rents rooms and who stays at their locations. In response to no prior notice, which was brought up by the Lodging Association, number one, I think that the owners and/or managers could fix, change, or remove any of the cards that were out of compliance if we gave them prior notice. Incidentally, I think it doesn't really make sense, it's kind of like warning a criminal prior to making an arrest. It doesn't stand to reason. Also, I believe it is inconvenient for the officers to give this prior notice because of, we don't know when we're going to inspect them, it is on a random basis. We may do multiple inspections of motels on these days, so I don't think it would be feasible at that time. We are also never intrusive and disrupt any kind of the operations on the motel when we do these inspections unless it is a specific task force against the motel. So therefore, I believe that the ordinance should be in effect as it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer. The issue was raised because of the inability of the Police Department to really regulate the illegal activities taking places at some establishments. Asha, do we know how many hotel motels we have in the city of Los Angeles?
No, I'm afraid I don't have that number, but there's a lot.
Hundreds.
Thousands, probably.
Thousands.
Yes.
And it's good for the tourist trade, but what we need to do is maintain the semblance of order and make sure that those locations that are involved in any type of criminal activity, and we know there have been many of those throughout the city of Los Angeles, and the Police Department's responsible to maintain a quality of life in the communities. So this was brought forward by the Police Department saying, we need to strengthen this so we can do our jobs to maintain order in the community so we don't have these establishments that are giving an open door, shall we say, to criminal activity, whether it be narcotics, prostitution, gangs, parolees trying to hide out from the apprehension. My concern is that the legitimate hotel industry is very responsible in conducting their business, and I don't find that they're objecting to any of the regulations we're putting in place. Have you found that to be the case?
We work with the Hotel Association, and they are, as Mr. Pfeifer indicated, a longstanding association, and they are willing to work with us and to iron out the practical implications of this ordinance, yes.
And then there's some associations that have recently surfaced after this was proposed. Is that correct?
I believe the L.A. Lodging Association is of recent vintage, yes.
And that was as a result, I believe, because we were trying to strengthen the regulations to give the law enforcement in Los Angeles the ability to do their job to maintain quality of life in the community, and to counter that, all of a sudden emerged an organization representing a part of this industry. And I have no problem with doing legitimate law enforcement and having legitimate businesses. The problem that the communities have brought to our attention, the Police Department's brought to our attention, is there's too many locations that are engaged in illegal activity that destroy neighborhoods. And whether it's the prostitute walking in front, or the drug trafficking that's taken place, or harboring fugitives, that's the issue that we really want to address. This will not affect people who walk into a hotel with a reservation, people who walk in with a credit card, people who are there legitimately to have a stay at that particular site, but this will be a law that permits the Police Department to enforce those areas where we have problems. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So what I would ask is that, we've met my office, I'm going to commend Tracy Chavera and Maris Hospinoza, who's worked with Asha in your office, and try to iron out the differences so we could come to some conclusion where the Police Department can do the job that we pay them to do and not be hampered. This issue about checking the records, if we don't have the ability to check the records unannounced, they're supposed to maintain those records, and to give the warning, we're going to be there next week at 2:00, get your records in order, I don't think, I think that really defeats the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish. There's an obligation for them to maintain consistent records and for the Police Department to have the ability to check those records at a convenient and as we have in the ordinance. We don't want to disrupt the establishment, but they'll do it in a professional, reasonable fashion. But to give warning that we're going to come and inspect the records, I think really counters what we're trying to accomplish, to make them responsible. If an operation is not running in a responsible manner, hopefully this will deter them from irresponsible behavior, conduct, and bring them into compliance so we can maintain the quality of life in the communities. So I would say, I don't know how many other folks have to want to speak on this, we've ironed this, we've massaged this, we've gone through the whole process to make it accessible. Shall we say we've loofed it? The loof? Loofit, loofit? You know that little thing that you, loofit? We have done everything, we have done everything reasonable. Maybe that wasn't the right term, huh? Okay. How about we've discussed it and debated it, and we've ironed it? How about that? We've ironed it out. We've ironed it, over and over, and there's no creases, there's no wrinkles in this. So let's say that what we have now, we could implement, and when was the last time we had a change in this ordinance?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Before that?
Well, oh, you mean in this ordinance? You know, there's no...
No, I'll tell them, the last time the ordinance was updated.
You know, 4701 was enacted in 1964, and that's the one that we're repealing, and 4149 had no date in there, so that must have been prior to '64. So they're very old.
So it's time to update it and to give the Police Department again the ability to do what they want to do, and I've just, credit card, cash, short-term rental. So if you've got a credit card, no ID, cash, no ID, short-term rental, ID, we're only going to require it under the certain conditions which will hopefully weed out those locations that are catering to some illegal type or possible some illegal type activity.
Yes, this is a really very limited ordinance. Looking at ordinances of other cities, for example, Oakland requires all guests to present identification, and we are not requiring that.
That would mean all occupants of the room?
Correct.
So if you've got five people?
Anybody, well, anyone who's checking in has to show ID, and also they prohibit short-term rentals altogether. So what we're doing through this ordinance is really addressing the individuals who pose a high risk of committing crime or engaging in illegal activity and asking that they be provided, they provide identification. This will not affect the vast majority of people checking into hotels who check in with credit cards.
And this will give the Police Department the ability to bring back to those locations that aren't in compliance, that are catering to quality of life, lack of quality of life, the ability to bring that back in line.
Absolutely. This will discourage those people who intend to engage in illegal activity from checking into the hotels.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. That's all I have, so I would urge my colleagues to support this, to give our LAPD the ability to do their job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zine. Mr. Smith is next, then Ms. Han and then Mr. Labonge.
Just quickly, I want to commend the staff. When it came before committee, we asked you to continue the negotiations. When the committee first heard this, I think we were about 90 or 85% in agreement on what was to be in this ordinance, but there are some questions that were brought up at the committee. We asked you to go back and continue the discussions, which you did, and I think what you have today is finally 99% of what everybody was happy with. There's still one issue, and on that issue, I agree with staff in the department that we don't need to have a special notification that we're coming. There is no law that I know of where you're going to tell people we're coming out to check you out. So I think you've done the right thing, you've done a very good job of communicating with the industry, resolving their concerns, and I'm very appreciative of you following through on what the committee requested, and with that, you've answered all my questions, Ms. Zine, thank you very much, and I support it.
Thank you. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to support this, but Asha, while you're here, I know you're the point person for our vehicle forfeiture ordinance. I know Tom Labonge was the first one to come up with the idea, having related to prostitution, and then I followed suit by having my colleagues support me, and we enacted an ordinance that also impounded people's vehicles if they were caught illegally dumping, and I know some other council members have also had some similar ordinances. Can you give us a kind of an update, since you're here, on the vehicle forfeiture ordinance? And I understand there was a recent...
If I could jump in, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. I just thought she was here, and I think it has to do with this in...
Only very tangentially.
Well, you know, let's be tangential today. And I know there's a recent court case that had something to do with it. I think this all is impacted because...
It's true that one concern actually was raised that having this ordinance would encourage people to commit prostitution in their cars because they would...
Right, yeah, that was one of the concerns.
They would not be able to, to commit them in motels anymore. And so that concern was actually raised.
Right.
And so, and in response to that, we do have a vehicle forfeiture ordinance that, where we can take the cars of those people who are soliciting or engaging in prostitution in vehicles, and there was a recent decision where we had lost in the trial court and the court reversed it, and I can give you further details of that, yes.
Okay, thank you. But thank you for making the connection to what we're talking about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge is our final speaker.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Han. It was Sergeant Hamilton, I believe, at Hollywood Area at the time, who gave me the idea, because other municipalities, and I don't know if we all read the Western Cities and the other magazines that come out and get the idea, Oakland and Stockton had this, and our city attorney, Ms. Greenberg here, really did the job and helped us. I'd like to ask the public to give her a big hand for pushing all the way here. And Ms. Han, I also want to credit Mr. Garcetti because his work in his district, where there were a lot of motels, and also benefited by the MTA subway red line, it has turned those, what they would call trick hotels, into very nice hotels where it's having people come who are actual tourists and actually seeing the sights of Los Angeles, not the sights of sin. So, I just thought of that, because I was thinking of you, Denny, anyway. I just want to thank you for doing this. We just got to do more. I'm for everybody to be respectful of a neighborhood, and also to be respectful of commerce that's in a neighborhood, of a commerce of the business community, because it hurts the business community. And motels and hotels do provide an opportunity for people to visit in Los Angeles, and more people who will visit and will clean it up to where it is, and I appreciate the association and their work that they do, and God bless the late, great Les Benson, who was always such a champion for improving the hospitality hotel motel group for all of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
With those kind words, we will bring this to a happy ending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. With that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We have a number of items that were called special for cards from the public. I'd like to call forward Zuma Dog for, if we can take up the following items together. Oh, I'm sorry, and just before that, before we get there, we have a little surprise. Mr. Labonge, can we ask you to come back for two seconds? Colleagues, as you know, it is Mr. Labonge's birthday, and so on behalf of the council, we wanted to present Tom with this cake and to wish him a very happy 53rd birthday. Mr. You, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you, Tom. Happy birthday to you.
Tom, would you like to say anything for your birthday?
I just want to thank you. It's absolutely wonderful life. I want to thank my parents, I truly do, and my brothers who I grew up with in my neighborhood at Silver Lake, and I want to thank everybody. I want to thank my wife, Bridget, who's had a very challenging year, that is the only wish I have for my birthday is her help, and I thank each and every one of you, because every day, and I was just talking to Alex, and say 20 years goes by fast, because 20 years ago, Herb and I were on the council floor as deputies, and Greg, and all of a sudden, boom, you're 53. So it's great to be here, and I hope to be here a long, long time, and I was, had the joy of being with Ms. Han this morning at a press conference, and two citizens, 193, Ms. Jacobson, and 198, a gentleman joined us, and to meet people who lived that long gives me hope that maybe one day I could follow them. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Happy birthday to you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Tom. You didn't thank your high school.
I didn't thank my John Marshall High School. My teacher, Mr. Burr Hickman, who gave me a D in English, but I learned how to write a paragraph out of it.
Madam Clerk, if we can take up a few items at once, why don't we put these before us? Number 18, number 30, number 36, number 37, number 40, 41, 46, 49, together. And Zuma Dog, you have six minutes on those collectively.
Yeah, yeah, let's see, that clock go up to six first. I don't trust you. All right, there it is. First of all, I'd like to say, on Tom Labonge's birthday, I must say, today is truly a great day for the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Labonge does such great things in this city. Now, first of all, we got item number 18, it's about sewers. I thought this was going to be bad, because you see, things like categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, thank you Noel Weiss for pulling me off and saying that's not a bad thing, so I'll just mention, we got 2.9 million going to sewer improvements right there. And since it's Friday, y'all, who wants Zuma Dog to cross off five items and not talk about them? Can I see a show of hands? All right, yeah, 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 all right. Eric said I'm going to weigh five items, y'all, and just get to some of the good things, yeah, yeah, all right. Oh, and since it's Tom's birthday, I'm going to say that I'd like to invite everybody to the NoHo Children's Arts and Poetry Festival, October 7th, that's tomorrow, the city's paying for it, and it's just a little bit of money, so we got to get youth involved. Little Zuma Dog used to love going to Saturday events like this, y'all. So it's the NoHo Children's Arts and Poetry Festival, that's Labonge who's sponsoring that one, and so make sure you check that out, y'all. But let me rewind to some of these negative things first. Oh, here's another good one. Item number 36, Jam Perry, "It Ain't a Pony Show," because this is grand opening of the Rainbow Apartments, and that's sponsored by the Skid Row Housing Trust. So it looks like we're going to be getting some new places downtown for them Skid Row people to live, yeah, yeah. Item number 37, you got a literacy fair, that's October 14th, if you're in Parks District, take note, y'all. Literacy's good, y'all. It's important to know how to read. It don't matter how gangster or how hip-hop or how, whatever you want to do, if you can read, that's going to open up paths for you, y'all, and you can beat the system with words, y'all, just like Zuma Dog, hootie-hoo. So check out that literacy festival, October 14th, and let's see what else is going on in the city with this fine agenda. Breaking news here on the Zuma Dog Report, it already happened, I'd like to say this is bad, CNN had an election special, and the city paid for it. I'd just like to say, I don't think the city should be paying for things like CNN or Fox[1774.36] I'd just like to say, I don't think the city should be paying for things like CNN or Fox News, because those are kind of agendized news services, even if you support it. I say that we shouldn't be paying for things like CNN. And, oh, they're going to pay for CNN, but they're cutting the franchise fees for public access. Nunez is trying to get rid of public access, and what they're doing is they're cutting the fees available for that, and that's good. They're going to, get ready, if you got cable, if you watching Zuma Dog on cable, that is going to be happening. Cable companies going out of business, y'all, because they're letting the phone lines come in, and they're going to be running the cable through the phone line, but then you can't watch City TV thirty-five. How you going to watch City TV thirty-five when it's on a telephone?
Mr. Garcetti, appears he's off topic on special event motion.
Okay, I'll get back on. Thanks so much for paying close attention. City Attorney, they scrutinize him by every word. Item number forty-six, it already happened, October fifth, but it's Animal Care Center. We got a lot of animal care people out there, so now we got the Los Angeles Department of Animal Services. Yeah, yeah, so give them a call if you need some animal services. That's a good thing, I'm sure. Here's something I don't like too much, y'all, but you can still sway me on it. Item number forty-nine, it's a skate park in somewhere, it's for a skate park. Now, I'd like to say, I don't know if the city should be paying for something like a skate park. I think it's too dangerous, it can cause injuries. How about a Wi-Fi park where people can come in and do homework with their Wi-fis? How about maybe a school tutorial in these parks? You know, instead of skateboard practice, you know, there's too much focus on being like Tony Hawk. You probably ain't going to be like Tony Hawk, so you can be flat broke, so why don't you spend some time doing things good, like learning how to read, and you can maybe do it in this park? Put some free Wi-Fi in there, yeah, yeah. Let's see what else. Oh, I'm talking too fast, y'all. I'm talking too fast. Okay, we got the item number fifty-four. We got a track map.
Sorry, I'm sorry, fifty-four is not one of the cards you put in. It's not before us.
Oh, look, look, look.
I think you've hit all the topics, Mr. Dog.
Yeah. Oh, no, I did it in four minutes instead of six. Your diversionary tactic worked. You cut my speech down by two minutes. Eric Garcetti wins this time, but I'll be back Tuesday. Hooty-hoo!
Thank you, Mr. Dog. We still have these items before us. Next, I'd like to ask Michael Hunt to come forward on forty and forty-one, please. One minute for each. Thank you.
Listen, you guys have a good weekend. I want to go home, too, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. And last, we have Mr. Dowd on items forty-one and forty-six, if you'd like to come forward.
Is that all I got? Two cards?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure? Can you check that? Just reset the clock, then? Okay. Item forty, Tom Labonge, everybody. Let's hear it one more time. Happy birthday, Mr. L.A. Tom L.A. Bonge. Now, he is, he's, you know, I already called for it once, you know, he needs to be the mayor. I want him to have a long, happy, fulfilled public life. This one's a good one, though. I hate to like, by the way, my birthday is Halloween. That's where I get my dark side from.
You could keep it to the special event motion, please, sir.
Okay, let me just find some poetry I found on the internet. This is the kind of thing you can find once you learn to read. Maybe it's not such a good thing, because...
Sir, if you could comment, please, on the special event itself?
Right, it's a special event. It's the Children's Art and Poetry Festival. So I want to tangentially touch on the poetry.
I'm sorry, sir, you have to address the special event, the content of the special event.
Yeah, this, okay, the content of the special event is the content is going to be poetry at the special event. And I found one online about Daryl Gates, said now he got Kentucky Fried Cracker.
Mr. President, this is an open mic.
Okay, so your last warning on this one, please?
That's Ice Cube. You can find that online.
Sir, you have to talk about the special event that's before us and keep to the topic, please. Thank you. You have item forty-six as well.
Oh, see, you just told me, give me another minute, then. Thank you, I got three items.
No, we gave you two minutes, sir.
Right, but I've got three items. So forty-one, I'm just expressing myself like CNN, their election express yourself tour, but they had them outside City Hall, and they wouldn't give me a cake out of their free thing. They're giving all the public, but now me and Michael Hunt walk up and it's like, oh, no, I'm sorry.
We appreciate your comments there. That closes our public comment on this. So that is all the public comment we have on these items. If we can, please open the roll on the items that are before us, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you. Next order of business.
Next item, Mr. President, you still have special meeting item number four before you. I believe there's a card on that one.
We do have one card on special item number four, and that was, hold on one second. I'll get that card. Mr. Chuck Tenen on item number four from the special meeting. This is the final track map approval. If you can please come forward. Mr. Tenen, are you ready, sir? There's no other cards, and that's the last thing for our entire meeting. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, while you're coming forward, I'm going to call the city attorney to make an announcement. Excuse me?
For the record, in Wednesday's agenda, item number fifty-eight, concerning the settlement in the case entitled David Allen Jones versus the city, the vote in closed session was ten to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Tenen, we're going to, we're going to start the clock, sir. Please go.
I'll make it short, if it's permissible, and thank you, and I apologize for...
It's okay.
But it's the final track map on Radford, which is in the area of Valley Village, which is very close to our track map situations. And again, it has to do with streets, sewage, drainage. Radford is no different. It's changing the characterization of the whole community that relates to it. I found out that there's two more buildings in the area that are going to be scheduled for demolition. It seems to be the area from Radford to Ben, which relates to that. And I guess they put all these things through, and they don't make considerations on people. I guess it's called the gentrification of a neighborhood, of a community, and it affects the lives of the people. Maybe they should add a new term to it, the extermination of seniors and people that need affordable housing on there for a different class of people that have money. And maybe that's the reason they're changing the whole neighborhood in Valley Village from Radford to Ben, this project being no different than the rest, but there's a whole bunch of them. You wonder if in city planning, if they, what the right reasons are for doing it, if they do things that need to be done before the facts rather than after the facts. And it seems like they approve a whole lot of things there, and they don't have enough hearings for the people that live in the neighborhood or the community. And on this track map, too, it relates because it's in the same neighborhood. And our street is a precedent of others, but our area from Radford to Ben is going to be a precedent of this city changing, in that they're changing neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir. I can ask you to include, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Tenen. That closes our public comment for special item number four. We can please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, October thirteenth to, for city business. That motion is required.
All right, I will move that, and Mr. Cardenas will second that. If there's no objection, I'll just remind folks that we will be down a couple members in the, or a few members, actually, throughout the rest of October, much of the rest of October, so the folks can keep their absences to a minimum, so we can keep quorum and attendance as tight as possible. Next, excuse?
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, October tenth, to leave at noon for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused October seventeenth, to leave at eleven fifteen, November fourteenth, to leave at eleven thirty, and November twenty-first. Those are all for city business. A motion is required on the seventeenth request.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Rosendahl second, if there's no objection.
And that closes this, Mr. President.
All right, the desk is cleared, colleagues. Any announcements? Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a few quick ones, folks. Thank you, Mr. President. Saturday, the first annual Walk for Children Tumor Foundation in Westchester at nine AM, eight-nine-hundred Sepulveda Westway. And then in Palms, from eleven AM to three PM, the Bike Rodeo at Palms Middle School at thirty-five-twenty Motor. And then we also, from twelve to three, have the third annual Westside Village Fall Spectacular, and that's at St. John's Presbyterian Church at eleven thousand National Boulevard. And then on Sunday, we have the annual Taste of Brentwood Street Festival, eleven to four at San Vicente and Federal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Other announcements?
Yesterday, Mr. Garcetti, thank you. Mr. Smith and I represented the council at the Los Angeles Fire Department's museum for their monument, and many of the widows and orphans of our firefighters came back, and it was a very wonderful ceremony, and it was something that is almost complete as far as building. Tonight, they have their big dinner up in Hollywood. So if you're going through Hollywood, stop by the Fire Department Museum on Cowinga there. It was very special. Also, I wanted to mention this weekend, the Tar Fest, which is going to be at the park in the Miracle Mile at the Hancock Park Page Museum, a great art show for all of us. And tonight, we have a special art night where our office rents a double-decker London bus, and we go to gallery to gallery along Wilshire Boulevard. It's open to the public, and it's free. And it's also a great weekend to go hiking in Griffin Park, and yesterday was absolutely beautiful with the clouds, and it's a good time, change of season. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my colleagues, for your kind words, and the staff of the city council for their help.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Padilla, and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Zine, I'll have announcements, I think.
With that great weather that Mr. Labonge is talking about, there's a lot of activities, particularly in the San Fernando Valley. Want to announce, first, the VEDC Access to Capital Business Expo to take place tomorrow morning at the Odyssey Restaurant. So all you small business owners out there, or somebody seeking to open your own business, you're welcome. For more information, please call nine-zero-seven-nine-nine-seven-seven. Also, for the people who live in the Mission area for LAPD, there is a joint LAPD and Community Police Advisory Board Town Hall meeting tomorrow morning, starting at ten AM at the Solmar Park Auditorium. In the Pacoima community and surrounding communities, please come and enjoy the Pacoima Beautiful Sixth Annual Family Day, very similar to the Health and Safety Fair that Councilmember Gruel hosts in her district, and that'll take place at the Youth and Family Center on the corner of Van Nuys and Glen Oaks. And last but not least, we encourage everybody to tune into the gubernatorial debate tomorrow evening, starting, I believe, at six PM. I'm sure it'll be on television. Get out and vote in November, but be informed when you get out and vote. Watch the gubernatorial debate tomorrow.
Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Parks, then Mr. Zine, then Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday again, Tom. It's a wonderful city next to you.
Old man, old man.
No, I'm not going to add that. I want to announce, this Saturday, from five to about eleven o'clock, on Colorado Boulevard in the great neighborhood of Eagle Rock, we're having a music festival with over eighty bands playing. Can you believe it, over eighty bands playing? Go out, have a good time, get to know Eagle Rock. It's an up-and-coming block, blocks, several blocks in Colorado Boulevard and Eagle Rock. Go out, have a good time, and enjoy some good music.
Thank you. Mr. Parks next? I'll get you, too. Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Zine, Mr. Smith, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several items for the eighth district. It's at the, number one, the Clime Business Academy, which is a group of young professionals in the eighth, ninth, and tenth district, will be putting together their Clime Academy for at-risk youth. It starts on October the seventh through December second, and it'll be held at Loyola Merrimott University, and we encourage young people in the community to attend. Also, one of our local legendary jazz figures, Buddy Collette, will be having his concert on October the fifteenth at the Ford Theater. He grew up in the ninth district and continues to participate in a number of events there. And then also, the Crenshaw Chamber will be having its home care seminars. The next one is Wednesday, October the eighteenth, six to seven-thirty at the Crenshaw Baldwin Hills Community Room. And then the final item would be, and this is something that we kind of forget about, is that many of us were involved with the issue of Katrina, and time has passed on, but we should be aware that the twenty thousand people that are on rent subsidies through FEMA, they expire as of October thirty-first, and for those that are impacted, they must get their recertification done through February two thousand and seven if they're going to continue getting that rent subsidy. And that's a number of people in Los Angeles and twenty thousand nationwide.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. This Sunday, the Lymphoma Cancer Society has the Walk in Warner Center Park, starting at five-thirty, and we invite people to come out. Lymphoma Cancer Society, a major walk in Warner Center Park, Topanga and Oxnard, also the West Hills Fall Fest, Saturday and Sunday, Santa Coa and Woodlake in the West Fernando Valley. And also this morning, the mayor and I and Peter Loi opened up the new Westfield Shopping Town with a ribbon cutting. It was absolutely spectacular. The Westfield Shopping Town is now open for business. The old Topanga Plaza went from eighty-five stores to a hundred and thirty stores. It doesn't have a food court, it has a dining pavilion, and I am talking upscale dining pavilion. It's really, really nice. There was a huge crowd there this morning. We did the official ribbon cutting. Our mayor was there to make that announcement with me, and it was wonderful that Westfield's invested five-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in this project, the renovation of Westfield, the old Topanga Plaza. And that's only the first phase, because a Neiman Marcus is going to be built on the same grounds, and that's going to be opening in two years. But the brand-new Nordstrom's is open with a hundred and thirty other stores. There's a new Target with a variety of shopping. So restaurants, shopping, entertainment, all come to the Westfield Shopping Town at Topanga and Victory Boulevard in the western San Fernando Valley. They have one of those devices like the Grove has, where the parking lot shows how many spaces available. State-of-the-art everything, so we welcome everyone to visit. It's now open for business, the Westfield Shopping Town, but the mayor was very gracious in his comments, and Peter Loi, the owner of Westfield International, was there. So it was quite an unveiling. The El Camino Band, the choir sang, and then the curtain came down, and the bands took off. It was absolutely incredible. Confetti, not graffiti, confetti was flying from the sky. It was a major grand opening. News coverage was there, so again, we welcome everybody to come out to the west San Fernando Valley. Enjoy your afternoon. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be on the mayor's mission to Asia on the trade mission, so I'll be gone for a little bit, but I'm sure my colleagues will carry on in the true tradition of democracy here at the city council. Thank you.
We wish you well. Thank you, Mrs. Zine. Congratulations. Mr. Smith?
Los Angeles, obviously. In the north end of the valley, tomorrow is the Granada Hill Street Fair. Thousands of people show up, hundreds and hundreds of booths, from eleven till four o'clock on Chatsworth Street between Zelza and Encino. On Sunday, my office is sponsoring a community cleanup at Dearborn Park, Nordoff and Amistoy from eight AM to noon. Also, beginning at noon on Sunday, is the annual Pioneer Day Chili Cook-Off at the Pioneer Home in Chatsworth Park North, the oldest home in that part of the valley, and it's a great opportunity to come out, see them, the community events. And then also, at three o'clock on Sunday, from three to five, is the first annual West
at three o'clock on Sunday, from three to five, is the First Annual West Van Nuys Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council Picnic, at Louise Park, corner of Sherman Way, and Louise, open all residents of Lake Balboa, West Van Nuys area.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel, and then Ms. Hunt.
Thank you, I just wanna announce two events, tomorrow is the Valley Trauma Center Walk Run at Woodley Park, section two, and encourage everyone to go there, seven thirty registration and nine o'clock walk, additionally, at ten o'clock, I'm having my Child Health and Safety Fair at Valley Plaza Park, on Saint Clair Avenue in North Hollywood, we encourage families to come, and children will be having a car seat inspection program, we'll be giving away some car seats for those that need them there, as well as helmets, and testing, and games for the kids, but most importantly, an opportunity to look at some options for healthcare, and a reminder to all of us, the importance of that, and particularly for our children, so we encourage you to come tomorrow morning, there'll be music, it'll be really quite an event, and I appreciate all the support we can have for that this weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you, I just wanted to announce that this Monday, which is Columbus Day, down in San Pedro, we have our annual sports walk enshrinement, we actually have a sports walk down there in downtown San Pedro, and this Monday, we're enshrining Joe Radesich, Louis Zamperini, Sparky Anderson, Chuck Knox, Joe Orbio, and Victoria Bruckner, all great athletes and great sports stars, and it's, will connect, it's been going on for a while, but we're connecting the whole sports walk to the downtown waterfront, and it'll be a great tourist attraction, not quite like the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but it's, it's close, and we enshrine athletes that have impacted the Southern California region, so nine AM, Monday morning, it'd be a great celebration.
Well, I just wanna say that's so great, so many great athletes have come out of San Pedro, including Joey Amalfitano, the great third base coach for the Dodgers, who they probably could've used the other night, 'cause I, I was in a firehouse, I was in a firehouse, it was at Firehouse Fifty-Six, and I asked all the firefighters, did anybody ever see that in their lifetime?
No.
And the one guy, one fireman said, said, "In Little League," you know, God, it's tough, but let's hope the Dodgers pull it off tomorrow, okay?
In that vein, Mr. LaBonge, the Dodgers asked me to remind all Angelenos this weekend, they'd like us to be wearing Dodger blue throughout the city, not just at the stadium, but obviously anybody lucky enough to have a ticket to go to the stadium, should drench that stadium in Dodger blue, we've got plenty of fight left in this city and in the Dodgers, and they wanted to remind all Angelenos to help our boys this weekend by wearing Dodger blue and supporting them for two badly needed victories, which will help even up the series.
Well, Mr. President, if you allow, but the city attorney will call for all skies to be blue for Dodger blue, is that okay?
Alright, we will, we'll work with the department, the Bureau of Sanitation on that one, absolutely, Mr. Rosendahl?
Dennis Zion, Bun Byaz, he's gonna be going to Asia with our mayor, and dealing with significant issues, we hope you learn a lot, bring it back, and have a safe trip, we look forward to you coming back.
Absolutely. Mr. Zion?
On a matter of, on the agenda, item eleven, we'd like that forthwith, Mr. President.
Okay, there's no objection to number eleven, forthwith, please, are there adjourning motions today, if I can please ask everybody in our council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Ms. Hunt?
I have two, the first one is for Michael Paul Mavars Sr., who passed away on September twenty-sixth in San Pedro, where he was a lifetime resident, he served in the Navy during World War Two, he was a retired longshoreman for Local Thirteen, and he was a longtime member of the Elks Lodge, Michael is survived by his brothers, John and Sam, sister Mary, wife Lorraine, son Michael, daughter Kay, six grandchildren, twelve great-grandchildren, and other friends and family, he's the uncle of John Mavars, who was an honorary mayor in San Pedro, and is my appointee on the nine-twelve commission. I also thought we should adjourn in the memory of the mother, former governor Gray Davis, Doris Meyer Morrell, who passed away last Sunday, she was eighty-three, she was a mother of five, Gray was the oldest, she was an avid amateur golfer, and she's the one, apparently, that taught Gray the game, and he went on to play on the Stanford golf team, and Gray said, "My mom encouraged us to think big, work hard, and always care for the less fortunate," she campaigned for Gray when he ran for governor, and in his two thousand and one State of the State address, he paid tribute to, quote, "The other woman in my life, my mother, Doris Morrell, the woman who raised me to implement her vision." She survived by her husband, Armin Morrell, his, her sons Gray, William, and Barry, daughters Doris and Anne, twelve grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren, that's a great example of a very powerful woman behind a man who was the governor of California.
All members on that, are there adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have other ones?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Weston, and then Mr. Zion, my apologies.
Members, I don't know if you've experienced this, but I rise today to announce the passing of the second, of a second staff person that I've had since I've been in elected office, this was a young man who was forty-two years old, he had injured himself, we call him Big Donnell, 'cause he is a big guy, he had injured his knee, he fell, and he had surgery on his knee, and the pain medication just was not working, so they would change the medication, and change the medication, and this morning, he had a blood clot, and he, he passed away, but I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Big Donnell Cooley, who was the director of the Legislative Black Caucus, he was a vice president for the NAACP, and when I was Speaker of the House, he was one of my can-do type of individuals, whenever I needed anything done, he would get it done, plus, he had a great personality, and was funny and loving, I can remember, he would tell everybody of the trip that he and I had made to Washington DC, and for me, it was just like a little statement, but it was hilarious to him, I looked at him, and I said, "Donnell, how many alligators did they have to kill to make those shoes?" But everywhere he went, he would just tell people that, that's where the, your alligator went, but anyway, I wanna adjourn in his, in his memory, he's a dear friend, and, and he will be missed, it's a very, very difficult thing for me to do.
Very sorry to hear that news, thank you very much, Mr. Weston, all members on that, Mr. Zion?
Charles E. Gogan, passed away September twenty-ninth, Charles E. Gogan was born November thirteenth, nineteen twenty-two, in San Francisco, was World War Two service Merchant Marine, a, also a longtime Los Angeles Times distributor, and later a Teamster with Lorimer Productions. Charles was a great man, a loving husband, a beloved father, and will be greatly missed, survived by his wife Rose, children Tim, Michael, Carrie, Joan, Catherine, grandchildren Matthew, Jackie, Tyler, Dylan, and Ethan, I worked for Charlie Gogan, I went to school with his two sons, and he was a Times distributor, and I worked with him, and for him, used to fold the Sunday Times, get a penny for each paper you'd fold, and put it in the machine, and then I used to go out after that with the drivers, and I was not able to drive a car, not, I should say, not legally licensed to drive a car, but the, the Times driver would say, "Kid, drive the car while I throw the papers," and I worked for him when I was in high school at Notre Dame, but a good friend, a man of the community, Saint Ambrose perished for many, many years, many, many years, really close to my mom and dad before they both passed away, so, may he rest in peace, Charles E. Gogan, thank you.
Tim, the dentist, my dentist.
Mr. LaBonge will second that, again, safe travels to Mr. Zion and Mr. Weiss, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And a very happy Tom LaBonge Day in Los Angeles, this meeting is adjourned, we will next be back in City Hall, that will be on Tuesday, the tenth of October, at ten AM, ten-ten, at ten AM, thank you.